Uh, good morning, everybody. Are you ready? Um, thank you all for being here. It is, um, November twenty-third, if you can believe it. And we're here for committee of the whole. We're fit able to be here on the unceded territory of Billyawat people. Um, we are. Uh, I will call this meeting to order. And uh, can I ask that someone please approve the agenda with one minor change? And that is to uh, bring in five point one delegation first and then do regional moment to after. Um, so with that, uh, Director Petten Gill, um, seconded by Director Bert Jones. All in favor, any opposed, want to carry us? Good morning to those online. We have uh, alternate director, uh, Paula Dionne, uh, Director Herford and Director DeMare online and some members of our staff. Thank you for being here. We will um, invite Mr. Paul Henderson to the table if you'd like. And we'll start with you because um, you're here. Thank you. Good morning.
So, good morning, everyone, and thanks for having me. And I'm here this morning. I'm Paul Henderson. I'm the general manager of solid waste services for Metro Vancouver. So our group is responsible for waste reduction and recycling planning for the region. And as you'll see, we also operate a series of solid waste facilities around the region. And as part of updating the regional solid waste management plan, we're getting quite close to finalizing a new regional solid waste management plan or an updated regional solid waste management plan. We're engaging with adjacent regional districts. It's a requirement under the um, the process to develop uh, updated solid waste management plan. And so just by coincidence, in parallel to me being here today, there's actually an adjacent regional district meeting that starts at ten. So I'll get to listen to it on my way back to Vancouver. So, so anyway, I'm gonna walk through some slides. And then um, once I'm done, I'm happy to answer any questions. So we'll just, someone is moving slides for me, I heard. That would be you, which I'm ready to go. So this is kind of an overview. We're gonna talk about the system, solid waste management planning update, talk about residual waste a little bit. There's been, as we get close to a new solid waste management plan, quite a little discussion with respect to it. And then just letting you know about the Zero Waste Conference that's coming up at the end of November. And just let me know if I'm not speaking loud enough for people online.
Yeah, Sal says you're good.
So I'm sure you're all familiar with this, but this is the Metro Vancouver region. There's twenty-three member jurisdictions, twenty-one municipalities, one treaty First Nation and one electoral area, about three million residents, and it's more than half of the provincial population. And it has a big impact on all aspects of the province, including solid waste. So what happens in Metro Vancouver definitely has implications around the, around the province in the end. There's a whole series of activities and services that are provided by the region under various, we actually have four different um, boards, even though it's always effectively all the same people, but providing a range of services. We put out water and basins, solid waste is the primary services. But in addition, we do regional planning. We have delegated authority for air quality, regional parks and housing and uh, relatively new function in Best Vancouver, which is a a regional economic coordination, economic investment coordination entity. What we do, and this is an all waste group, is plan for less waste. That's really the primary goal of the regional solid waste management plans. Every region in the province is required to develop them. We, we work to improve reuse and recycling systems and we, we run some ourselves. And in addition, we've worked with a whole range of other entities. And then we manage the series of solid waste systems that have a combination of recycling services. But in addition, receive effectively all the garbage, the residential, commercial and institutional garbage from the region, from the three million people, which is about a million tons a year of garbage. These are the facilities, the, the Metro Vancouver facilities along with the city of Vancouver's facilities. So Metro Vancouver owns six recycling and waste centers. We call them recycling and waste centers. Other people, even my kids, call them transfer stations. And um, the, the reason we call them recycling and waste centers is they have a much bigger function. They just stop going in the door and heading to disposal. We also own and operate through contractor, the waste energy facility that's been in place since nineteen eighty-eight in Burnaby. And then we work very closely with the city of Vancouver that owns and operates the Vancouver self-transfer station and the Vancouver landfill. It's an integrated system where all the rules, the fees from all the customers' perspective, they can't tell if it's the Vancouver system or the Metro Vancouver. It's an integrated system, but two, two different owners effectively. Solid waste management plan. And again, every regional district is required to develop these. And it's kind of a ten-year cycle. So from the time our previous plan was approved in, or our current plan was approved in two thousand and eleven by the Minister of Environment at the time. And under the guide, within ten years of your plan approval, you're supposed to start an, an updated process to develop a new plan. They don't run out, they don't expire. But there's this kind of ten-year cycle of developing up, updated plans. So as I mentioned, the real goal of these plans is to figure out how to generate less waste in the first place. And then in the end, how, how are you gonna manage that residual garbage? So here's where we are. What we've worked through, we have a whole range of entities and groups and the public that we work with around getting to an updated solid waste management plan. Where we are now is we've gone through pre-engagement, vision and guiding principles, idea generation. And now we're down to the crunch, like what are the things that are actually going into the plan? So we're at options analysis and it's really the last step before a draft plan that gets provided to our board and then to the province. This was one of the first elements, first one, first element that went to the board for approval. And of course, in the end, these are elements of the plan. Ultimately, the entire plan has to be approved, so this could be updated. But the board's approved this vision and guiding principles. And it's uh, it's a bit complicated, but at a high level, reduce waste, but do it in an affordable way and, and be, all, these are all things we heard about. Have a resilient system, have accountability, environmental stewardship, an inclusive system, encourage innovation and collaboration and have transparency. And those are all, um, those are all things that are really important to Metro Vancouver. So this, this is another element that's gone to our board. And this created a lot of discussion among our two primary advisory committees. We have an industry advisory committee that has people from the solid waste, sort of basically garbage and recycling industry, either collection or processors. So we have that group. And then we have a public and technical advisory committee. And that's made up of a broader range of people. And so there's a lot of discussion with respect to this. And it's the goal, the hierarchy that pretty much everyone has seen uh, at a high level. The big change with respect to this hierarchy compared to the current plan hierarchy is down at the very bottom in dispose. Obviously, we built up more at the top of the hierarchy. So basically adding your things, so think about all the systems that need to be in place in order to achieve your goals to reduce waste without some discussion. Um, a lot of discussion down in dispose. And the key change we made from our, our current plan was in the current, or in the current plan, we have waste to energy and recover. So dedicated waste to energy and recover. And we have landfilling and dispose. And what we came to the conclusion was that, and this is how we've always acted, waste to energy and landfill are both disposals. So we put them in the disposal um, part of the hierarchy. And we're not the first people who have done that. But from our perspective, they're both options for disposing of waste after you've done everything else in order to minimize the waste. So this, the options analysis is the piece that's underway now. And so we started with a whole bunch of ideas. And then we're narrowing down and been engaging with First Nations, the public, these advisory committee, neighboring regional districts, that's you. And the uh, business and industry nonprofits. So a, a lot of engagement to get to what are the pieces that go into the draft plan? And we're just about to, we've already completed a lot of engagement. We're getting ready to um, produce the document. So all the ideas and we've, we've created this list of two hundred potential actions and strategies that are published. We also had, we started with three thousand ideas and those are also all published on our website. We're taking feedback with respect to those potential strategies and actions until the end of this month. And then I've said it like four times already, but we're hoping to get a draft plan in early twenty twenty-six. It's like everything else, like every step so far has taken us longer than we'd hoped, but we're, we're getting very close. So these are things, we just pulled out some of the strategies that we think could be of interest to the SLRD, um, advocating for circular economy policies, data, data tracking and analysis of the data like we are. There's a number of things I say in public. One is that we believe we have the best data of any jurisdiction in North America with respect to data available to the public. And so that data, we see it being used all over. So collaborating with businesses and institutions to reduce waste, um, supporting consistent approaches to reuse. We see this as a real priority. Enhancing the extended producer responsibility programs. We all know what's happened recently where the province decided they would push forward some EPR items, but not mattresses in Box Springs. And we're like many other regional districts writing on that. And that the scale of it from our perspective is that we collected our facilities ninety thousand mattresses per year, so ninety thousand. And we charge people fifteen dollars per unit because we don't want them to throw it in the ditch. But we pay almost forty dollars per unit to process it. And so that our, the system and all the users of our system are funding, you know, the, about over two million dollars a year because we're not recovering the full cost. And of course, we're hoping EPR programs kind of came in place for it, but uh, the province is saying not yet. And then the last one, uh, reuse, uh, use building materials. So disposal, and I heard at the beginning, this is something there was some interest in hearing about. So I'm glad I brought some slides. The, our system, so the way our system works, again, is about a million tons of what I call garbage, the residential, commercial, institutional waste that's flapped over after everything you've done to recycle. So excluding that construction demolition waste. Um, it either goes to, collected in all its facilities. It either goes to the Vancouver landfill, again, owned and operated by the city of Vancouver, comes to our waste energy facility. Or we have what we call contingency disposal contracts. So we have three contracts with faraway landfills, one in Central British Columbia, uh, one in Washington, one in Oregon. And basically, we use those ones for any waste that we can't manage within the local system because each of the systems is capped. So right now, it's about fifteen percent of all that garbage goes to one of those three contingency disposal landfills. And just focusing on the waste energy facility, it foot, it processes about twenty-five percent of the region's garbage. So um, last year, about two hundred and forty thousand tons. Since two thousand and three, it's been generating electricity and it generates enough electricity to power approximately sixteen thousand homes. So continuously generates electricity. Carrying on. The environmental performance is definitely something that is of interest to everyone. And this is to, the, the slides are time to be challenging to see. But basically, the, the red lines, so we're looking on the right next and off sides and then particulate matter. So these are important contaminants and potential air contaminants. So you see what's happened. So this goes all the way back to the uh, beginning of the facility, the regulatory levels, so the significant drop over time. We've gone, uh, since twenty fourteen, we updated a system and resulted in a sixty percent reduction in nitrogen oxides. Similarly, you see with particulate matter, which is also um, an important air contaminant. You see that the regulatory is almost dropping and you see basically what you see is the line going to zero effectively. And all the information with respect to environmental performance, we report out to the Zero Waste Committee each year. It's all reported to the province on a monthly basis. The Fraser Health Authority, the city of Burnaby, all the information is available on our website, including continuous and monitoring, continuous and monitoring data. So there's a number of parameters, you could go right after this meeting and see what they're doing at this instance. So things like um, uh, just arrange parameters. And then a couple of other elements with respect to it, I already mentioned electricity generation. We recover about five thousand tons per year of ferrous and non-ferrous metals from the facility. It used to be just ferrous. Now, um, as of twenty eighteen, we're also recovering non-ferrous, which is aluminum and copper primarily. And one of the things that we are actively working on is a district energy system for the waste energy facility. And the, the level of actively working on is that we actually started construction on it yesterday, the pre-construction work of some site prep. Um, so that's the beginning of construction on the project. And basically what it is, is that with the thing generates steam, it's just as a natural. You, you burn garbage, you have to cool down the thing, just like a car. And I used to say just like a car, but now I have to say uh, not an electric company. So basically, it's the same idea as a radiator, that you have to get that heat away from the burning garbage. And when you do that, you, you, you take water, create steam. That's why it runs a turbine. But running the turbine is less efficient than just heating hot water, so heating water. And so district energy system, you take that steam. In, in addition to generating electricity, you're taking the steam, heating water, and it'll be piped by a six-kilometer pipeline to River District or community in Vancouver. That's been a district energy system since it was initiated. And basically what it'll mean, right now, they're running natural gas burners that they'll literally turn off as our pipe connects into the system. So that's the first element, which again, I noted is under construction. But the next piece, we're working, we have agreements in place with the city of Burnaby to, they're developing district energy utilities in Metro Town and Edmonds. And what overall, all the prep will do over its life is triple the energy recovery of the facility by going steam to hot water in addition to electricity, provide heat and hot water for up to fifty thousand homes, reduce greenhouse gas emissions by up to seventy thousand tons per year compared to those buildings running on natural gas. And then it's effectively running like our other utilities in that the heat will be sold to those district energy utilities as a wholesaler. And that'll recover that the cost of the project, which is about two hundred million dollars over the life of that infrastructure. It's a very exciting, so it's a very exciting project. And it'll be the largest green um, low carbon, uh, low carbon district energy system in North America once it's complete. And then just before I get to this, there's something that, so I, I should always write notes, I never do. But the, our system is completely funded, like the overall solid waste system, Metro Vancouver's overall solid waste system is entirely funded through tipping fees. And so it's this, this budget, we had a budget meeting yesterday with our board. It's hundred and seventy million dollars per year, so in twenty twenty-six. And that whole system is funded through people dropping off stuff at our facilities. And it's, that's quite unique among major communities in, in Canada. And a big chunk of the reason for that is this, we have a regulatory framework that effectively forces the commercial haulers into our system. Whereas if you're in Toronto, Calgary, Edmonton, the, you have parallel systems and there's a whole range of benefits, including that that system is self-funded. And then jumping from all of that to um, the Zero Waste Conference. And this is a conference Metro Vancouver's been running since two thousand and ten. It's scheduled for November twenty-seventh. We've gone from a annual conference to a conference every two years. As part of us, like everybody else is looking at, how do we reduce costs related to all our functions? And so this is one of the things we did, was to go from every, every year to every two years. And it's an exciting conference coming up. Um, your staff will all have seen invitations to it. It's November twenty-seventh, downtown Vancouver. And there's just one more slide, just provides a bit of detail on it. It's, it's great, we have, we're, we have lots of people that work with me that are working on the program in detail. But it's gonna be a spectacular day. It's a one-day conference that's kind of a combination, like anybody, I don't know if any of you have ever been to it before. I've been to it many times and I always thought it was a bit too high level for our day-to-day, like the things we have to do. So we're really working to make it a combination of high-level thinking, but also practical knowledge. So it's a combination of plenary and then there's um, three different workshops streams. So I'm looking forward to it. I think that is my last slide. I, I didn't even check it off, but probably longer than that.
Well, we, we accounted for a little bit longer for you because um, we talked about this a lot.
Yeah.
We're, uh, we're a very vast, but you know, vastly populated region. And uh, we have a lot of landfills and um, we're always wondering how we can do things differently. So um, we're interested. This is wonderful. I wanna go to the conference. Um, does anyone have any questions for Mr.? Go ahead.
Uh, to um, the one, maybe an easier one. Do you see any opportunities? I mean, I think you talked about the data you have available, but are there any obvious opportunities to collaborate either on management or data sharing or or just more a broader system improvement?
Yeah, yeah, for sure. The uh, we're, like, as I mentioned today, we're meeting with regional district staff from the three adjacent regional districts. And those will be one of the things that'll be discussed is how do they work together to optimize the benefit for everyone?
And then the tougher question, I've gotten some, this from colleagues at FBRD. Um, and my understanding is there's some concern about SOX rather than uh, NOX. And that the, the um, incinerator is, has been, uh, don't wanna miss this word, but delaying uh, upgrades and operating under interim regulatory standards. And so sort of the performance that people would like to see, especially in the FBRD, uh, this is sort of far under that. I, I don't know if you can speak to that.
Happy to. The, there's long complicated stories about pretty much everything. It's all waste, we all get that. The waste energy facility operates under a provincial operational certificate. So it's regulated by the provincial government, not by Metro Vancouver. An operational certificate was put in place in twenty sixteen with a whole range of activity, pro, um, processes, improvements. All of those activities were, have been implemented. I mentioned that NOX reduction as an example. The, the one piece that um, there was basically, so uh, SOX, so SO2, NHCL are acid gases. And the, as you mentioned, the original operational certificate had interim limits and then absolute final limits. And basically, what's happened over time is that we did a series of studies, all required as part of the operational certificate. And what those studies demonstrated was that at current emission levels with respect to both SO2 and NHCL, there isn't the, the, it's, uh, there isn't, uh, I just wanna make sure I always use exactly that. It's, it's safe for the public, there aren't environmental impacts with respect to the facility. And so kind of the story continues. There was an um, an amendment to the operational certificate in April of this year that, that gave, provided three years to develop infrastructure to reduce those parameters. And the, our, our studies showed firstly showed that very, very low levels of the ambient concentrations of these parameters and showed that in order to implement that infrastructure, be a very significant investment in the, in the range of a hundred million dollars. So at the time, Metro Vancouver appealed that requirement. And on September twenty-third, an updated operational certificate for the facility was issued by the province. And under that operational certificate, so the updated operational certificate, Metro Vancouver is required to do a number of studies and propose new limits by September twenty-third of twenty twenty-six. We may, we expect, we may not be required to expend this hundred million dollars that our conclusion is, isn't necessary. But that process will work through, will engage with the public, will work with a, a whole series of studies with the, the question of what are the infrastructure requirements? What are the emission lef, levels that are appropriate for this facility? Our perspective and all the data that we have demonstrate that the facility is safe, cost-effective, without an impact on the environment. Sorry, that was a long answer.
Thank you. Uh, Director Stoner, and then I have Director Hopple, and I have Director DeMare on the screen. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you to the chair, a few questions. The first, I wanna clarify what you meant by the utility is fully cost covering through tipping fees. Um, I suspect that like residential garbage collection gets charged.
Yeah.
And yeah, can you explain that to us a little bit?
Thanks for the question, actually your questions too, sorry. The uh, the, the way that our system works um, is that vehicles come over our scales, they're weighed in and out. All the municipalities are customers to our system, same as all the other users of the system. So the way municipalities are charged for the service is based on the amount of garbage that they collect from, mostly municipalities collecting from single-family homes. So they collect the garbage either with their staff or with contractor, trucks drive to our facilities. We send them a bill every month, same with every other customer. And so there's a combination of fees for garbage. There's also fees for some round recyclable materials like yard trimmings and um, clean wood. Those fees cover the entire cost of the system, there isn't specific. So our water and liquid waste services, we levy the municipalities um, directly. We levy the municipalities. In this case, they're charged the same as all the other customers based on the amount of uh, tonnage that goes across the scales.
Got it, that's helpful. Thank you for that clarity. And my other question was around capacity at the waste to energy system. Um, it's about twenty-five percent of the waste at this time. Is, does it have capacity for more or is that kind of its max capacity?
It's, it's, it, we run it at full capacity all the time and similar. So it's the capacity with respect to the waste energy facility is capped operationally. Can't put any more garbage through it. The Vancouver landfill is capped based on the maximum operational certificate limit.
Um, and what is your expected lifespan of, given like kind of bad case scenario?
Waste energy facility?
Both waste energy as well as the landfill.
Yeah, sorry. The waste energy facility, it's, there's facilities. So it's what, another one of the questions received, the facility was built in nineteen eighty-eight. And so people say, well, it's old, should it be um, shut down, basically? What we've seen is that like many types of infrastructure, as long as you continue to maintain it, it's effectively um, has not an infinite lifetime. But um, we've seen facilities in place in European sys, cities for up to a hundred years in the same location. They just keep changing all parts and that's how you maintain a waste energy facility. With respect to the landfill, the, the landfill, there's an agreement between the city of Vancouver and the city of Delta with respect to the landfill that has a, a, a cap, a tonnage cap. And that tonnage cap isn't consistent with the physical capacity of the landfill. And so we're just working with the city of Vancouver and Delta right now on with the goal, collective goal of making sure we use the physical capacity of the landfill, which is based on the footprint. And there's improved heights, so those two things, the, under this, the tonnage cap, basically it wouldn't be full. Um, so we're working with them on that to come up with effectively a new number with, with a random projection, where it's like, we don't have that today.
Yeah, fair enough. Uh, one more question if I may, um, which is just around, you said the system that you have kind of forces uh, haulers to deposit at your local landfills. Um, being from the south end of the regional district, uh, we often hear about actually haulers going up and down the Cedar Sky to try and outprice each other. I'm, I'm just wondering if you can speak a little bit to the regional implications of how we set fees and how we manage that across regional districts?
Yeah, the regulatory framework that we have in place in Metro Vancouver with respect to garbage, it actually goes back to the nineteen nineties. So in the nineteen ninety-five, the GBS and DD Act was amended to allow something called a generator levy. So that's the regulatory framework's been in place since twenty eighteen. So the concept is that everybody benefits from this system by just driving to some cheaper facility, um, you, and dumping your garbage there. You still have the benefit of the system as a generator. So the way this system works is that there's a fee that's regardless of whether you use our system. And it's currently around um, between seventy and eighty dollars a tonne, I shouldn't know the precise number. But the average, it's about half the total cost of disposal. So if a hauler hauled garbage somewhere else, they would be obligated to collect on behalf of the generators and remit to uh, GBS and DD this generator levy. What we've seen is that there's no garbage going outside of our system. We have mechanisms to have a good idea of that. So that, that's with respect to haulers picking up garbage within GBS and DD. Um, our bylaw for waste from outside of the region, our bylaw um, requires that it be at, at a different rate than our, uh, our typical fees. So we have a special kind of rate that applies to any waste coming out from outside of the region. And we see that typically at the waste energy facility where some, whatever, some entity would like to see the material that they generate not be landfilled and it's their choice. And they, they're willing to pay a higher fee to have it disposed of at the waste energy facility. Um, with respect to regular household garbage that moves between regional districts, like from other regional districts, and it's hard to measure. But it would be based on the bylaw, be subject to this.
Director Hopple.
Yeah, um, so a question is around health and hospitals and the I-
Yeah, um, so a question is around health and hospitals and the IV bags. So IV bags are used and they they come in a covered plastic bag. And inside the actual IV bag is made of a poly um vinyl chloride. Uh, but it's very, it's but it seems very thick. It's now, I I know that there's issues with um cross conca- contamination and infection control. But I'm just wondering, I and I think Saint Paul's Hospital did some sort of trial last year. But it's just, there's so many bags going into our landfill, and they just go straight into the landfill. They throw them in the garbage. They're in the landfill, and there's hundreds of thousands of these bags. And because they're such a a thick bag, and it's, you know, they're one time use, obviously, as gloves and and tubing are too. So I'm wondering if there's any programs that are being talked about, because I know like we can get rid of batteries, we can get rid of, you know, asbestos, paint, oil, all those things. Is there any conversation about hospital IV bags? Tubing, that kind of thing?
As you would expect, I'm not an expert on that. Our role, our role around working with the health authorities is primarily on the disposal side.
Okay.
Um, we actually just had a meeting with them uh uh last week. We have another meeting with them this coming week. Not so much on the recycling side, uh, from a disposal perspective within the region, actually. So there's kind of three streams of stuff coming out, uh, from my perspective, three streams of stuff coming out of hospitals. Stuff that they send for recycling, we don't see it. Regular garbage, so which would include those materials. And all of that material currently is going to our waste energy facilities, about ten thousand tons. Like you said, it's a lot of materials, about ten thousand tons per year. All goes directly from the entire region, all the hospitals, all the of all the medical facilities, or the um Vancouver Coastal and Venk and Fraser Health Facilities, all going to the waste energy facility. And then the third stream is the hazardous component, the red bag component, also not us. I know they're working really hard on that first stream to make sure everything that came with the recycling does go to recycling. But hospitals are a little bit challenging because of this potential that you have stuff that cross contamination, that you have stuff that should be in a red bag. That's the biggest problem, right? Stuff that should be in a red bag, and they got them one of those two other streams. So they work very hard to minimize that. But I can't speak specifically to those IV bags.
Okay, cuz I know all the IV IV bags are just going into the garbage. So they're going directly into the.
Yeah, and definitely from a, from a user, like from a facility perspective, like that stuff isn't hazardous from a disposal. It's not hazardous waste, but it does concern people. And so so that's why in the end, it all goes to the waste energy facility to kind of minimize contact with them.
Okay, thank you.
Director DeMare?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Uh, back in nineteen eighty nine, I actually applied for a job at that waste energy plant. And I decided to stay in Williams Lake, so I never went down. But uh, is there more opportunity to put another plant in within the region?
The our current plan, and so this was a lot of discussion with respect to the plan that was approved in two thousand eleven. That plan, the kind of the focus was reduce waste, same as the plan we're working on now. And then the approach was kind of flipped from mostly going to landfill to build new waste to energy capacity. That process was terminated in twenty fifteen for a whole range of reasons. And this process we're going through now, our hope is to not require any capacity. Either new waste to energy, uh, low capacity will determine the plan. And no work, we're not doing any work right now on new waste energy capacity. The stuff we are working on is the stuff I show showed where it's like maximize the environmental performance of the waste of energy facility. Maximize the community benefit, the environmental benefit through things like district energy.
Okay, uh, is there a a document that shows what actually is burnt? To all all the various different materials?
Yeah, the way our system works is that, and this is the both. So there's no distinction between the materials going to either landfill or waste to energy. Both systems are able to take effectively household garbage, business garbage directly into the system and and manage it. So in a landfill, you, I I worked, I managed the Vancouver landfill for ten years. The very basic approach is seepile, pushpile, but there's a whole lot more to it, um, as you would expect. And similarly, a waste energy facility, basically you have a truckload of garbage. It gets dumped in a pit, you have a crane, puts it into a chute that goes into the boiler. So there's the garbage is exactly the same with the exception of certain materials, like both both systems are important. Like as an example, asbestos waste um from within the region. A lot of that material gets managed at the at the Vancouver landfill. It's a hazardous material, doesn't burn. Um, other materials, like as an example, all of the used pharmaceuticals from the entire province that are collected through the House Stewardship Agency, they've all come to the waste energy facility cuz they're pretend, they're particularly interested in secure disposal of those used pharmaceuticals. Similarly, we get international waste. I mentioned hospital waste already. So we see some materials being prefer- preferentially sent to one system or the other. Um, but from a basic household garbage perspective, you can either landfill it or manage it in a waste energy facility. It's there, they both work well.
Okay, uh, just one more. Well, I'll just make a comment. We've got our forest industry has not been doing very well. And we have a lot of coal energy plants that produce electricity through BC. Has there been any talk of utilizing them for garbage?
You say, what what was the type of plant?
Uh, a co-gen plant, same thing, but they use uh wood waste to create electricity.
Right. The the environmental systems, like the our waste to energy facility is a dedicated facility that's designed, built and operated for the purposes of managing that household and residential institutional energy advantage. The that I I minimize the uh technical requirements with respect to that. You can't just take that stuff and put it in another thing that burns um burns material. The uh the facility is, the emission control systems are very complex, much more complex than any other facility in British Columbia, I would suggest.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, uh, Director Crafton, go ahead.
Thanks for the presentation. I I thought I heard you say, what's international waste? Sorry.
So international waste, so examples are cruise ships, but not cruise ships going to Alaska. If there's, and it's all defined by the Canadian Food Inspection Agency. So if there's a cruise ship that's coming from some far far away place coming into Vancouver, that waste has to be handled. It can't just go into regular garbage. Um, similarly, international airline waste, so uh waste coming off um airplanes that are coming from other countries. That's international waste.
Uh, and is it a significant amount of the waste stream?
All in, so we call these streams special handle waste.
Yeah.
Um, so excluding the, I mentioned hospital waste already that can be treated as regular garbage, even though it goes to the waste energy facility, are combined special handle waste. I mentioned they use pharmaceuticals. There's also stuff police wanna get rid of as an example. That the the total of that is about ten thousand tons a year, including all these differences. Agricultural waste that they're worried about disease transmission, that the combination of all that is about ten thousand tons a year. Out of the roughly two hundred and forty, that goes to waste energy facility.
And the previous conversation you had with Director DeMare, um, you said that twenty fifteen, the process to pursue other uh waste energy facilities stopped. I'm wondering, so this move of incineration into disposal, um, is someone in response to that, does anything else about the way you expect this report to be presented change as a result of that? Philosophical adjustment?
Yeah, and this is kind of getting into the weeds, but that's what I love to do all day long. Yeah, the approach we're taking with respect to disposal and future disposal, and we've communicated this with the, and this is all in drop, but we've communicated with our attending committees, is including the plan, this concept that these are the two options for disposal. And we just did a study that basically said, you get to choose. There's, and I, right now I have four different people that are talking to me about ideas that they think would better manage waste. But kind of the universal North American, European, Asian conclusion is that it's really mass burn waste to energy or landfill, and those are your two basic choices. So that study we've just completed. And then our what in as part of that study, we've also, it's sort of a technical criteria in the study that identify criteria. So every community makes a decision, what do you do with the garbage? And so what we see is in Canada, kind of ninety eight percent of residual garbage goes to landfill. In the United States, it's about eighty percent goes to landfill, twenty percent goes to waste energy. In a lot of European countries like Germany, um, Switzerland, the in those countries, kind of ninety nine percent to waste the energy, one percent. So every each of each of those communities made a decision. And so the what we're expecting to put into the draft plan in any case is the criteria that that we have identified is that, so if new way, if new capacity is required with respect to disposal, here are some criteria that others have considered when deciding what to do. So that's that's the approach that we're taking, rather than we're saying it's basically those two options. Those are the primary ways. You you're gonna reduce as much as you possibly can, and then you're gonna have to make a decision. And if we need new capacity during the disposal capacity during the plan, here are criteria that could be considered at that time.
Compost. You don't mention any separate compost facilities. Are you uh, is that just smaller than any of these other facilities, and that's why it's not really notable, or?
Yeah, these are the facilities that I mentioned are all the Metro Vancouver and City of Vancouver facilities, specific facilities that we own and operate. In addition, so our facilities receive organic material. But similar to other materials, they go to typically to private facilities. So we, on the North Shore, we um we receive the um, you know, basically the way it works at Metro Vancouver is municipalities collect the stuff, organic material, and they individually have contracts for processing.
Okay.
We also have some contracts for processing. Currently, the material that we collect, we Metro Vancouver at our facilities, it's being processed at facilities outside of the region. So we have contracts, we go through procurement process and have entered into those contracts.
Okay, so presumably some of it's coming up to Cetus guy soils here in our region.
Yeah, and we, I I don't know the today's situation. Our material has been processed at Cetus guy soils. My understanding at this moment is the Metro Vancouver material is not being processed. It, we have a contract. But my understanding is at this instant, material's not being processed at Cetus guy. We have other contracts, similar to our contingency disposal contract. We wanna make sure we have a robust, reliable, resilient system, and so we have multiple contracts.
Right, okay. We're really proud of that facility, and it's a, it's a, it's a great part of our region, so.
Yeah, I I drove by it today, and I agree, it's a spectacular facility.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, thank you so much for, unless there's any other questions from anyone, anyone on the screen. Um, really appreciate your engagement with us. Um, we recognize how important this is to um all of British Columbia, meeting our sustainability goals. And uh, we know that we can't do this alone. Um, so thank you very much for the time that you've put in, and we're looking forward to seeing you again at some point, I'm sure.
Thanks again. Thanks for all your questions, and thanks for the hard questions too. Of course, everyone has them in the back of their mind, but they say, can I really ask them? Yeah, thank you. Thanks to everyone.
You know, we don't ask ourselves whether we.
Um, okay, let's do regional moment, and then we'll or if you wanna read those other delegations, we have the time for me to do forty five, which is a perfect time. So just sorry, guys, we're gonna have to wait.
That's good.
Okay, this is excellent. Okay, we are now at five point two. Where we're looking at here. I see, okay, this is great. Yep. Uh, okay, so we've got Whitney Dean and Chris Guerin and Robin Spencer. Uh, I think those three, you see them all on the screen here? Robin, the best, okay. Um, I will turn it over to you, Whitney, as our BC Hydro friend and colleague, and whoever else, oh, there's Robin. Hi. Um, and I see Chris and.
Good morning.
So that's okay. Um, I will turn it over to you for your presentation. You do have uh five minutes for your presentation, and we have some time for questions at after. So over to you.
Right? I just wanna make sure. Hi, everyone. So my name is Whitney Dean. I'm the BC Hydro stakeholder engagement advisor for the La Joy Dam Improvement Project. And thank you very much to the uh board chair and directors for having us today. I knew you'll be hearing about the Bridge Capital Projects uh after us, but for this presentation, we're going to focus on the La Joy Dam Improvement Project. So as a um you mentioned, we have Chris Grant, who's a project manager for the project. And then we also have Robin Spencer, senior uh indigenous leader, indigenous relationship lead, and also the project manager for the access and accommodation studies that are going on. So today we'll go through a brief overview of First Nations consultation as well as the project overview. And then we'll get into the access and accommodation feasibility studies, and then our communications, how we communicate updates on our projects. So first honoring our agreements with First Nations. So La Joy is part of the Bridge River System. It's located in Statleyan Nation Territory. So uh Statleyan and BC Hydro have agreements that define how we work together and provide a framework for a relationship based on mutual respect and understanding. Collaborating at various levels to deepen our understanding of Statleyan values and integrate Statleyan perspectives into project design and planning. We're also working together to identify meaningful economic and employment opportunities. And at this point, I will turn it over to Chris Grant, who will go through the project overview.
Thanks, Whitney. For our project, it's really important to understand the water system context. That's why we brought this up here. So the La Joy Dam up near top left is at the Bridge Ri- is at the top of the Bridge River System. It impounds Downton Reservoir. So our project is at La Joy Dam. The water from Downton Reservoir then goes into Carpenter Reservoir, where it's impounded by Terzaggy Dam, roughly center of your your image. Then there's tunnels that go under Mission Mountain to the Bridge Two Powerhouse into Seton Lake, and then out through the Seaton Dam and Powerhouse and into the Fraser River. So what is impounded at La Joy Dam, where our project is, is used three times. Once at La Joy, once at Bridge River, and then again at Seton. So it has very useful context in managing system flows and production. Next slide. So the purpose of our project is to address safe dam safety risks due to the age of the dam and seismic vulnerability. Is that dam in front of you is about seven, over seventy meters high at its hi- height and over a kilometer wide. So it's a very large uh dam. Uh, in twenty fifteen, we had to adjust operations to mitigate these safety risks by reducing the maximum uh elevation from seven hundred fifty to seven hundred thirty four meters. This effectively lowered our storage capacity by about half. And this really reduced our ability to manage flows through the system. We have investigated at a conceptual level alternatives associated with restoring full uh improving the dam to restore full reservoir operation, half reservoir operation, decommission, um, or refurbish. So what we found was that the best conceptual level solution is to improve the dam to restore full reservoir operation. And that provides us the ability to better manage system flows, both environmentally and for production. We received conditional endorsement from the Statleyan Authority on this. And we'd just like to note that this is a very large project, which means it's subject to the BCU C review. Next slide, please. So right now, we are in the feasibility stage. And what that means is our objective is to not just find a conceptual way of restoring full reservoir operation. It's a feasible, concrete way of doing this under various constructability and environmental constraints. The stage is really a The stage is really about defining how we can do this. Next slide. What we know at this point is we really believe that it'll be necessary to lower the reservoir, do a deep reservoir drawdown to conduct these improvements. These deep reservoir drawdowns have environmental impacts. So we are very, very focused on finding a feasible solution with as few as practical of these deep drawdowns. Next, I'll pass you on to Robin, who will take you through access and accommodation.
Thank you, Chris, and good morning. Yeah, so I'll speak briefly about access and accommodation. We, the project launched a study back in twenty twenty three to to look into options for getting workers and materials to site and also housing workers at site. This was important because these were um understood to be uh significant risks for the project, given its remote location. And also um understanding that these would be major touchpoints for the community as the as the project uh moved into construction. So what you're seeing here on the screen is just a a high level overview of the options that we've been looking at in feasibility. Um, and I'll go into this in in more detail in the next slides, but you're seeing there um the the dam, of course. And then um some pinpointed sites with the with some accommodation locations we've been looking at. And then in purple, you're seeing the access options that we've been investigating in this phase. Uh, if you want to go to the next slide, please. So in terms of access routes, we're looking at the three options you're seeing there in the bullet. So um obviously Route forty is an existing option that um gets us to the dam from Lilowet. So looking at improvements along along that route. Uh, we've also been looking at the use of the Hurley for service road that connects from back of Pembroke Meadows over to Goldbridge. Um, and I've been considering the potential for opening that up in the winter as a part of the project. And then we've also looked at using um the Gun Lake airstrip to support having workers flown uh in and out. Uh, in feasibility, right now, we're kind of just coming to the end of this work, um where we're getting some you know, fairly high level design um done on that. Uh, and so that's um been the focus last little while, along with some environmental and archaeological studies. On the accommodation side of things, we came into this phase with three shortlisted options. And early on uh in the spring of this year, a couple of those options were were deemed to not be feasible due to various constraints at those sites. So those were a couple of the options that were closer to the dam itself. The the Hurley site, which is about five kilometers out from from the dam up along the the Hurley, um remained uh shortlisted. And throughout this fall, we've been doing investigations there. Um, and then we we added another option that's being called the Penrose Site. That's that's closer to um the Gun Lake side of things or uh La Joy Lake. Um, and we're currently doing investigations at at that site as well. Pass it back to you there, Whitney.
Uh, I'll speak.
Over to Chris.
Yeah, I'll speak to the timeline. So what we just discussed was how we got to where we are today. Uh, the next important thing is to confirm uh our preferred alternative. And at this point, uh by the spring of twenty twenty six, we expect to confirm that restoring to full rest for operations is the likely feasible solution in our preferred alternative. Uh, but we won't confirm that until the spring, as we have some more activities to do, both uh physical and also with our our executive and board. The next step after that is preliminary design, where we're trying to uh further understand uh what we need to do for design, constructability, and really try to optimize uh our solution. And in about twenty twenty eight, we expect to file with the BCUC. And that's when we also think uh we'll probably be in a position to start construction over worker camp and possibly some access, uh the larger access upgrades, whatever they will will be. Uh, we need the camp and the access in place before we start full construction. Right now, the earliest that we see of full construction is about in twenty twenty third, twenty thirty. And then uh the first drawdown anticipated December twenty thirty through May of twenty thirty one. Now, this is all uh very preliminary, so take it, take it with a grain of salt, please. As the further out we go with any project, the more uncertain things are. But this is what we see at this time is our project timeline. Thank you, Whitney.
And then this is how we've been communicating our project updates. So delegations like this one, as well as uh in person and virtual open houses. We just held an in person open house uh earlier in October. Uh, there's a newsletter that goes out on all the Bridge River projects. And we've also done mail mailouts to people, social media posts, and we have our website as well. And then, of course, people can contact us uh through our projects email as well as phone as well. So that's it for our presentation, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you all. Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Director Brichfield.
Thank you, just just a comment, thank you. I I really appreciate all the communications on this. And because I was on the FWCP board for for so many years, it seems like I'm considered the local expert on what Hydro's doing in the area. Be and you guys are so good about answering the questions I send you like same day, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, and I'll ask for a very high level answer because the answer, I'm sure, could take hours if we got into it. But uh thinking about work camps that we've been considering or dealing with in Squamish, I guess a few things consistently came up. And one is sort of risk to community, um because there is some history of work camps, uh risks to workers from landslide and and social issues and that sort of thing. And then the whole question of um, you know, the need for housing and are we putting tons of money into temporary housing when we should be doing permanent? So very high level, can you speak a little bit how you're thinking about those things or balancing those things?
Yeah, I think part of that with the work camps and social issues uh that came through in the La Joy Dam Access and Accommodation Studies. So that was a big part of the reason to do that and people had concerns. Uh, and then it's also um what we've learned even, um and you'll hear about the Bridge River Access and Accommodation Study, every community is a little bit different. So something that came through in the engagement for the um the early part of our engagement uh for the access accommodation study is people do want some uh people, you know, having businesses having some opportunity for interaction and people having some opportunity for interaction with people. But there's also concerns with changing uh the uh area uh and what that means, bringing in people to the area, managing recreation. That's another one that's come through as well, uh infrastructure and services. So a big part of that is uh a work camp is helpful in that you have one central area. You're not um taxing other infrastructure in the area and you are better able to manage the work camp, the people, the flow, the communications of when they're going, shuttling people, logistics of that as well. Uh, but I think there's still a lot of planning to be done. And Robin, I'm gonna um send to you as well if there's anything you want to add.
Maybe just that uh we have some experience from projects we've been delivering at Bridge River over the past, you know, decade or so with the with the code of conduct that we've developed, that we have um our workers all sign on to. Um, it's been developed collaboratively with Statleyum as well, um because we've heard some some concerns from them related to, you know, what we know about industrial workers and impacts on indigenous women and girls in particular. So that's been a really um effective tool in our experience so far. And we'd be looking to adapt that in this case as well and working with the local community on what exactly that should look like um in in this area.
And then I would just add, so uh Robin is going to be stepping down from her project manager role for the access and accommodation studies, but she'll stay on the project in her role as indigenous relations lead. Um, but that brings in, some of you may have met Carmen Brooks, and she uh has experience with work camps and site C. So operating those and other work camps in Canada as well. And so she brings a wealth of experience and she'll be uh taking on the access accommodation study piece uh for La Joy.
Thank you, and Director DeMar.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation. And as Vivian, um you know, the communications have been really good. The various surveys that were done, just like you discussed there at the beginning of all this have helped out a lot. Maybe if you could just speak a little bit regarding the Goldbridge Community Club?
Sure.
And and the use of it?
Yeah, so the Goldbridge Community Club, uh we know that so this part of the project, uh and this year really in this phase, we've been spending some time identifying property owners that may be affected by the project. Uh, and the Goldbridge Community Club is right next to the La Joy Dam. Uh, we're working with all of those property owners right now because the project's in early planning stages. The first stage is really establishing those relationships with the different property owners, understanding them, because every property owner is different. But then also the Goldbridge Community Club is unique in and of itself. So usually um BC Hydro is uh used to dealing with property owners where it's a single person. Maybe you we need to, if there's noise, uh you need to um be uh put somewhere else while there's heavy construction uh temporary, so live temporarily. Or there's safety issues and we need to manage that. With the Goldbridge Community Club, it's unique because it is a public facility and it's a community center. So what we've done is uh we're working with them and those and will, they are private property owner in a way too. So we do want to respect their privacy, but what I can also say is uh part of that relationship building and helping them was funding uh some engagement earlier this year to understand how they want to mitigate the risks and what they would like to see. Uh, and so some of those options are looking at uh moving them temporarily, uh what kind of facility they're looking at uh and how we're going to manage that. But ultimately, the Goldbridge Community Club, we know that at some point we may, we will need to close them because it is a safety issue. So we have a quarry that's nearby and the dam, and there'll be a lot of construction between the two. And the Goldbridge Community Club is right in the middle of all of it. So it's a priority at this pay, um at this stage, though, we're just trying to talk through and investigate options with them. And we funded engagement previously with them and will continue to support them in any public engagement they need to do with the community as well. Chris, I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
Oh, that's uh that's well said, Whitney, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Whitney, that's uh that that's an excellent answer. And uh I know the community is definitely uh was engaged also, so thank you for that process.
Thank you, Sam, thank you for being helpful with us for uh local knowledge in the community too.
So everybody, this has been really helpful and we do have your colleagues coming in immediately after you uh to talk about Bridge River. So we are going to uh thank you for being here and we're going to um stick back.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, apologies for the delay. Um, we're about ten minutes behind schedule, so um thank you for being here, uh Bridge River team. I'll turn the floor over to you. Um, and we look forward to hearing your five minute presentation.
So are we gonna? Let's hope we don't have any more technical problems. Can you hear us over there?
You're clear.
Perfect, um I'm not too sure if Venus has managed to call in. She unfortunately got hit by a power outage. So I'm not too sure if she is on this call.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, so I'm going to have to start off, so hi, good morning. Uh, my name is Jim Shepherd, I am the manager of Capital Projects and I have Karen here with me, she's a project manager. And um I see, I thought I saw, um I don't know if Sabrina's there, but I also thought I saw Robin Spencer. So can we get to the next slide, please? Okay, so we're just gonna go through a Bridge River Systems update, some of the capital plan updates, some First Nations consultation things, and then some access accommodations. So if I go to the next slide. Um, just as an overview of the Bridge River System, I think we presented this multiple times, but um La Joy Dam, um we're gonna be discussing that. It's sort of in the top left corner, water goes into the Downton, stops at La Joy Dam, there's a La Joy Powerhouse there, flows in a Carpenter Reservoir where it's stopped by the Terzaghi Dam. There's two two um tunnels and pen stocks to go to the Bridge River One and Bridge River Two Powerhouse. The water then goes in the Seton Lake, into the Seton Dam and Powerhouse, and then into the Fraser River around Lilowet. And I'm going to, next slide, please, and I'll pass you over to Karen, who will be sort of going over some of the things that we've been talking about.
Good morning, everyone. I'll be providing updates on the capital projects we have underway in the Bridge River System. Um, on the screen here, we'll be starting with a Seton Bypass project. So this project consists of a new tunnel that will be building around a powerhouse as a second generating station. Uh, we then intend to provide an alternate way to convey water from Seton Lake to the Fraser River during periods when our generating unit is shut down for maintenance or upgrades. This tunnel will also reduce the risk of fisheries um by mitigating high flows down the Seton River. Project design and plan is underway. We do intend to submit an application to the BC Utilities Commission in late twenty twenty seven, sorry, twenty six, um most likely early twenty twenty seven. And there is some early construction to prepare access roads and lay down areas being planned for twenty twenty seven, next. In terms of the ongoing activities taking place right now, so we have completed several rounds of archaeological investigation for this project. The most recent one was completed last month in September. Uh, we do anticipate completing further ecological fieldwork um in some areas. And that work is being planned for spring of twenty twenty six. Next. The next project here is the sitting distribution feeder extension project. Uh, so the pur- purpose of this project is that we'll be extending a third feeder from the sitting substation to the town. And the purpose is to reduce demand on the two existing power lines because they're reaching capacity. And thereby will be improving reliability of electricity to the region. Construction for this project is being targeted to start next summer twenty twenty six and be completed in August of twenty twenty seven, so it'll last about a year. Next, please. As for the La Joy project, I believe there was a presentation just prior to ours uh where this was discussed in more detail. And if there are no questions on this one, we can go to the next slide. Bridge River One, uh so there are a couple of projects at Bridge River Generation Station One. The one here on the screen is the replacement of units one to four. Uh, so the existing generating units at Bridge River One, they were built in nineteen forty eight, they do require upgrading as they're nearing end of life. Uh, a certificate of public convenience and necessity was granted by the BC Utilities Commission back in October twenty twenty two. We are anticipating to start construction in twenty twenty eight and complete replacement of all four units by July twenty thirty two. Next. Um, the next one here is a pen stock internal recording project, also a Bridge River One. Um, construction is planned to start in April of next year. There will be four years of construction, one per pen stock, with the final one planned to be finished by October twenty twenty nine. And the photo here you see on the screen is of a related project that's been completed, and this was the foundation upgrade project for the pen stocks. Uh, this project's construction started in twenty twenty one and was completed last October twenty twenty four. Next. As for Terzaghi, there are two projects uh underway at our Terzaghi Dam. The first one is a spillway should access improvement project. This is intended to remedy a rockfall hazard above the spillway to improve worker safety. Construction is also planned to start next year, target to be completed in twenty twenty seven. And the second one is the dam low level discharge reliability project um that intends to improve the ability of the low level outlet system. This one is still in very early planning stages, um we're targeting completion in the early twenty thirties. Next. And this is the final project I'll be talking about today. And this is the final project I'll be talking about today, which is the Bridge River Transmission Project, and it's required for upgrades and repair work on an existing transmission line in the region. A certificate of public convenience necessity was filed with the BC Utilities Commission in twenty twenty-one, but we do anticipate apply for an updated application this fall. Some current activities include environmental ecological assessments, project access roads and other access sites. Construction is also anticipated to start next fall in twenty twenty-six with completion targeted for twenty twenty-nine. And I believe that's all for my updates. I'll pass it back to Jim.
At the next slide, please.
This is the one.
Oh, perfect. Yeah, the Bridge River system is located entirely in the Stat Liam traditional territory. And BC Hydro has continued to collaborate with the nation to integrate their perspectives and interests into our planning and to work together to identify meaningful economic and employment opportunities across the projects. So next slide, please. In, in the operations, sorry, the access and accommodation studies in the Bridge River area, we studied both the access and transportation, worker accommodations, and socioeconomic impacts and options, sorry, to mitigate impacts. Right now, it was important to note that these recommendations stem from broad concerns, suggestions, or requirements we heard from both local communities, the stakeholders, and Stat Liam. Next slide, please. As a result, some of the project updates, the worker forecast is currently being revised and we'll be sharing what's ready. For the next steps on access accommodation study, we're going to be continuing to work with the nation and the community, of course, to engage and communicate with local communities and stakeholders. We've been looking for specific sites for work camps near Seton. And also, right now, BC Hydro is working with the Stat Liam Hotel Consortium on the new hotel that is possibly going to be built in the Lilawet area. We have recently passed over our latest offer. They are mulling it over. I think there was a few sticking points between the two of us, but they're going to be getting back to us fairly soon on those points so that we can sort of work out a great agreement. And I think we were looking at having a hotel in place to be able to manage to work with the Seton Bypass project sometime in the early spring of twenty twenty-eight. So next slide, please. Oh, this is just a communication slide. So this is how we inform you of your work. I'm not one of the communications people. Unfortunately, she's stuck in a power outage, so all of the information is present on this slide and can be available through the links. I guess, are there any questions?
Okay, we have about two minutes for questions. Any questions? Go ahead.
Of course. And I'll limit my questions to, I'm sorry that Ines isn't here today because I particularly wanted to thank them.
She is here.
Ines is there.
She just popped on.
Oh, hi. Vivian here, and thank you so much for your communications, in particular about the restoration work that's going on at the Horseshoe Bend. Super interested in that. It's very good news. And from the SLRD point of view, we know that there's an access issue and we're trying to help with that. Mostly, it's Ministry of Transportation that, that holds the levers on that. More to do with fish. Sorry, is she's going to speak?
No, there's a feedback from the, okay, carry on.
Just on the tunnel into the Fraser, I'm sure you're doing this, but just reminder about consideration of mitigating the out there in the Fraser for the salmon, the return, particularly the gate's run. Just that that is being attended to. And the other one is just, I hope you know about the very early days studies on the Wanish fish, the landlocked kokanee. It's a different species, very unique and interesting, both in Seton and Anderson Lakes. And Shalath and some naturalists are doing some work on that. And that is an extremely good opportunity for Hydro to just be aware of that project, but also maybe to participate in it. Oh, those are my comments. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I'm sorry to have cut you short, but thank you all for being here. Thank you for your presentation and your continued engagement with our board. We really appreciate it and we look forward to seeing you again soon.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, so as we bounce around on this agenda, we are going to stop. We're going to recess this committee of the whole as we're moving into the training session with the accessibility training coordinator. And then we will reopen this meeting at some point after lunch.
Do we do, can we have a time for the party?
Oh. Do you think that you want to do a working lunch today so that we can
Yes.
carry on? So then we will reopen to the public at twelve thirty. Is that right?
Oh, how about we give us up? Because it's over twelve thirty, so we're about to give us five, ten minutes.
Great. Get our lunches and then come back to the table. And then we'll reopen committee of the whole, complete that agenda, reopen the open meeting, which is already substantively completed, and then close and then open.